Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, November 25th, 2019. My name is Louise Chris and with us today is David Tetrow, our Sign Language Interpreter. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilwoman Reverend Rick V. Burgess presents Bill 2330, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in the Amount of $3,000, $33,000 to Jane D. Simone for Arbitration Services rendered in connection with the Act 111 Interest Arbitration. Bill 2331, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in the Amount of $16,000 in favor of Robert Aldred and his attorney for full and final settlement for litigation filed in the U.S. District Court of Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill 2332, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in the Amount of $3,875 in favor of James and Randy Cohen for repairs to gas line service line which was damaged by a DPW forestry crew performing stump removal and grinding operations of a city row tree at the location on September 19th, 2019. Bill 2333, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Pittsburgh for certain property having been placed for sale to adjoining property owners in conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program, 846 Phineas, 1815 through 17 Lowry and 113 Elmont. Councilwoman Deborah L. Gross presents Bill 2334, Resolution Requesting the Authorization for the Mayor and the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Power Consulting Corporation to provide customer service and soft skills training to the department staff. The agreement is chargeable and payable from the following account in amount not to exceed $35,750 for a one-year contract. Bill 2335, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Contracts with Fireman Creative to assist the city to plan and conduct a design workshop and produce a visually compelling suite of digital and print materials to effectively communicate our neighborhood plan program and guide to the public for a variety of users and provide the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $24,950. Councilman R. Daniel Lovell presents Bill 2336, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a grant agreement with the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration to receive $182,803. Councilwoman Teresa Cale Smith presents Bill 2337, Resolution Granting on to Seabroff Partners their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense an ADA entrance ramp at 419 South Craig Street. Bill 2338, Resolution Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 42 of 2015 entitled, "In Order to Account for the Increased Project Cost Higher Than Originally Anticipated Not to Exceed $1,212,000." Councilman Bruce A. Kraus presents Bill 2339, Resolution Amending and Supplementing Resolution 539 of 2016 entitled, "Authorizing the Mayor, the City Clerk, and/or Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Contract or Contracts or Agreement or Agreements with Granicus for Software Upgrades, Server Hosting Services, and Annual Maintenance of Legisstar Agendas Management System and Video Streaming in Order to Extend the Contract Additional Six Months." Bill 2340, Communication from Kevin Palos, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting a $500 Donation of a Hamstring Curl Machine for the City of Pittsburgh's Police Training Academy. Bill 2341, Communication from Kevin Palos, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting a $500 Donation of a Leg Curl Machine for the City of Pittsburgh's Police Training And Bill 2342, Communication from Kevin Palos, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting a $500 Donation of a Neck Machine for the City of Pittsburgh's Police Training This concludes the reading for today, Tuesday, November 25th, 2019. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Monday, November 25th, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Mr. Lovell.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Cale Smith.
Ms. Strasburger.
Yeah.
Mr. Kraus present.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This morning, we have some very special guests of Councilwoman Cale Smith. We have students from Pittsburgh Westwood Elementary's instrumental ensemble to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then they have a number of musical numbers they will be performing for us. Would you like to start with the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the redeemed and justice for all.
Okay, you may. Thank you. That's it. All right, so that concludes our program of the Pittsburgh Westwood Elementary Instrumental Ensemble. Thank you, guys. Thank you. We'll take a moment while everybody has a chance to gather the things and exit, and then we'll go into the Proclamations. I'm sorry? Sure. If you'd like, sure, you're welcome to. We just... I need you to... Right, need you on the microphone. Right there, we're just fine.
Hello, I am David May. I just would like to thank our teacher. I'm the Acting Principal of Westwood D.A.'s School, and I'd like to thank Mrs. Bushager, as well as the Westwood Students, and Mr. Mike and Ms. Edwards for their support of Westwood's School. So, we really appreciate the opportunity to be down here today, and we thank you for this opportunity. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Didn't you get to remember this morning that we were dressed up like a team today? So, we come in like a team.
I like this. Yeah. Thank you. I look forward to that. That's great. That'd be great.
Thanks, everybody.
Watch out for that one on the floor. Don't trip over that. You want me to get that? No way?
All right. Our next order of business then is Proclamations. I'd like to begin with Councilman Burgess, followed by Councilwoman Smith, please. We'd like those, for Chuck Cooper to please come forward, please. And mail from Council, from Representative Ed Ganey's office. Everybody can come, you can all come? Please come. I get to talk about one of my favorite subjects, which is basketball, right? We have a proclamation, whereas Charles Henry Chuck Cooper was born September 29th, 1926, in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. He was the son of Daniel and Emma Cooper. He graduated from Westinghouse High School in 1944. And whereas out of high school, Cooper enrolled at the historically black Western Virginia, West Virginia State College, but he left school after just one semester to proudly serve his country in the Navy at the tail end of World War II. Following his tour of duty, Cooper returned to Pittsburgh to attain Duquesne University. Whereas Cooper made his NBA debut in the Celtics' season opener on November 1st, 1950, scoring seven points. Due only to the fact that Earl Lloyd's Washington Capitals opened their season one day earlier, Cooper missed the distinction of being the first black player to play an NBA game by one day. Whereas Cooper was elected to the Pennsylvania Sports Hall of Fame in 1974, Duquesne University has honored him by awarding the Chuck Cooper Award to talented underclassmen since 1983, retiring his jersey in 2001, playing the Chuck Cooper Classic Game each season since the 2009-10 season, naming a building on campus, the Chuck Cooper Building, after him in 2011, and naming him as an automatic selection to its All-Century Team in 2016. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Chuck Cooper for breaking down color barriers through the game of basketball, and be it further resolved that the Council of City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, November 25th, 2019, to be Chuck Cooper Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Have a motion in a second, please.
Second.
On favor. Motion passes. Congratulations. This is the Nate Smith Memorial Basketball Hall of Fame Enshrinement Trophy. It is a lot heavier than it looks. It is extremely heavy. And I believe that your dad also, I think, was the first black director in the City of Pittsburgh. He was the Director of Parks and was the first African-American to be a director. He has been a, he has, he was a first in many, many ways. Blessed to have played with the son a little bit, you know? He used to kill me on the court, but I'm blessed for the family, and certainly we're just grateful to honor his legacy and memory. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Burgess.
You step forward.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to thank City Council, Councilman Burgess, for this tremendous honor and recognition. And we have our City Councilwoman who I just met, and what's your name again?
School Board, Veronica Apple.
Veronica, the School Board's Director, excuse me for that. And I want to point that out, and I'm glad to have met you today, because my father actually was a member of the Pittsburgh Public School Board at one time as well.
That's right.
Brother Il, Brother Mel, who actually is the Executive Assistant to Ed Ganey, State Representative Ed Ganey, my beautiful wife, Shelley Cooper, and my daughter, Charlisse Cooper. And, you know, just to say a couple of words, you know, really truly is an honor. And, you know, I don't think the early African-American pioneers are recognized enough, particularly my father in this city. When you think about Jackie Robinson, he was the Jackie Robinson of basketball, right? So, he had to go through all that turmoil that Jackie Robinson had to go through. And, you know, even though he was the first African-American drafted to the NBA and officially broke that color barrier, it was the great Bill Russell that refused to accept his Hall of Fame ring until my father got in. So, he waited 44 years to accept his ring until my father got in in September. But we're probably even more proud of the fact that he was the first African-American City Department Director when he was appointed Director of Parks and Recreation by then-Mayor Pete Flaherty. And that actually came with death threats being called into our homes, so that wasn't a pleasant situation. And also, he was the first Urban Affairs Officer for Pittsburgh National Bank predecessor to UPMC, or, I'm sorry, Pittsburgh National Corporation, PNC's predecessor, Pittsburgh National Bank. He was the first Urban Affairs Officer, a position they created for my father because he really began to put community banking on the map for Pittsburgh National Bank at the time. And we have the beautiful UPMC, that's why I get confused, which is the former Palumbo Center, is going to be UPMC Cooper Field House. So, I am going to challenge Councilman Burgess and the rest of the council members, Council Lovell, and everyone else, that, you know, we'd like to see the city actually recognize my father, when you think about what he went through, to open that barrier up as the first African-American City Department Director, and the Pittsburgh Public School System. You know, there's no reason why every kid in Pittsburgh shouldn't know who Chuck Cooper is. And right now, when I go out and we do our outreach through the Chuck Cooper Foundation, which is an organization that provides graduate-level scholarships, leadership development, and outreach to students K through 12, and really talk to them about the importance of education, the understanding, the importance of my father's legacy, what he had to overcome, so they know that they can continue to keep hope alive and achieve their goals and their aspirations. And we have Astor Toclay, who I'm going to ask to come up and stop recording now, is actually one of my graduate scholarship recipients, who we're so proud of now. She is the Entrepreneurship Specialist for the Urban Redevelopment Authority. So, you know, when we see our scholarship recipients begin to do well in the community, it just really provides us with more incentive to keep alive his legacy through the Chuck Cooper Foundation, which today has awarded almost a quarter of a million dollars in scholarship support to our students. So, Councilman Burgess, we'd like to see a Chuck Cooper statue. Mr. Scott Lamb, who's on UPMC, chairs our Statue Committee, or a street hopefully named in honor of my father to continue to honorize, to continue to honor and recognize his great contribution to the City of Pittsburgh. Thank you very much, I really appreciate it. If anybody would like to, I don't know when you're going to get a chance to take a picture with a Hall of Fame trophy. Many council members, we'd love to have you come up for a group picture with the Hall of Fame trophy. Although we do have Shwing Cash, who will probably get a Hall of Fame soon, but she's not a true Pittsburgh, she's from the Keysport, but we adopted her. You want to say what you want?
Yes, a few words.
This is pretty healthy, but pretty heavy. Just want to say, it's an honor to have had opportunity on Friday, 22nd, to a Chuck Cooper Day at his alma mater, Westinghouse High School. There's been a lot of turmoil and press, very negative about Westinghouse this year, but on Friday, it was a glorious celebration. On Friday, you had alumni come in and pour their love, their wisdom, their understanding, and encouragement to the students of Westinghouse. So, I'm standing here today because of Charles Cooper. He was an influence in my life. He grew up in Larmour, I grew up in Larmour. I grew up with his nephew, grew up the Cooper family. And so, it's just an honor today to stand here with Chuck and his family and say that I love Charles Chuck Cooper. Give it up for him, Charles Chuck Cooper. Come on, give him a hand.
Since this is, since this is certainly citywide, of all members would come and take a picture, please. Now, we need, oh, it'd probably be better for someone... Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. Congratulations.
Teresa, how you been? Always good to see you. Appreciate it, really appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks again. Thank you so much.
Oh, good, I'm glad I'm in back. I didn't realize you were taking a photo.
Is it that heavy? Okay. Next, may we have Councilwoman Cale Smith, please? Good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning. And could we have the folks from Goodwill, please, come forward, including Kim in my office, who serves on their, come on, Kim, you serve on their Housing Board, correct? Come on. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for being here, and thank you for all the work that you do throughout the City of Pittsburgh, throughout the region. Thank you, thanks very much for being here. Thank you, everyone. I think a lot of us are so familiar with Goodwill does, but sometimes I think we sometimes tend to take it for granted, the amazing work that they do across the region, and especially when it comes in terms of landfills and reusing materials and the effect that that has on the environment and the economy. And so, their work has been noted in many areas, but I want to make sure that we also emphasize how much their work is done throughout the region in terms of the things I just mentioned. Whereas Goodwill of Southwestern Pennsylvania, which was founded in 1919, is celebrating 100 years of helping people with barriers to employment enjoy the sense of pride and self-respect that comes with employment. And whereas Goodwill provides employment, job training, education, job searches, digital skills, reintergenera, regeneration, and other essential supportive services to establish and improve self-sufficiency. And whereas in 2018, Goodwill provided services to 10,739 adults and youth and placed 800 hundred and thirty-nine adults and youth, and placed eight hundred and seven people in community employment fulfilling entry and mid-level positions. And whereas their many transition services prepare students with disabilities to move from school to post-school life, and Goodwill's supportive housing programs helps those who are experiencing homelessness transition to permanent housing. And whereas Goodwill's thirty-three area thrift stores sell thousands of goods, donated goods daily, where over ninety percent of every dollar contributed to Goodwill goes directly to support programs and services to help people with special needs. And whereas last year seventeen, seventeen million pounds of materials was, seventeen million pounds of materials was kept out of landfills, I'd read that number twice to make sure it was so accurate, out of landfills through Goodwill's efforts to recycle, reuse, unusable items donated to Goodwill stores. That's seventeen million pounds of materials kept out of landfills, I just want to emphasize that over and over. So shop Goodwill. Whereas the total economic impact of services and employment in our region by Goodwill was over a hundred and fourteen million. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby congratulate Goodwill's, of Goodwill of Southwestern Pennsylvania for one hundred years of helping people achieve the power of work in their lives. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen to be Goodwill Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Here, may I have a motion in a second, please? All in favor? All right, motion passes, thank you very much.
I'm going to turn this over, but I just want to say thank you for all the, I, I'm stunned by that number, because it really is a lot, and when you talk about the environment, how important the environment is to, you know, to everything that's happening now around the region, there's every reason for you, not only the, the work they're doing in the environment, the work that brings, the money it brings to the economy, but also the employment it brings to people, there's every reason to shop at Goodwill and reuse materials and to donate, so please make sure that you do so. And I will turn it over to you now, or whomever.
On behalf, behalf of all of us at Goodwill of Southwestern Pennsylvania, and of course, we'd like to thank Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith and the rest of the members of City Council for recognizing our hundredth birthday this year. My name's Mike Smith, and I'm President and CEO of Goodwill, and I've brought, brought some, some friends along with me today that I'd like to introduce. First, Gloria Keith is one of our program facilitators, Anthony Corey McCoy, one of our education students, Donna Whitehead is a vocational specialist, Diana George is our, one of our Aspire Program participants, and Ella Holziger is our Vice President for Human Services. Founded in nineteen nineteen, as you heard, Goodwill of Southwestern Pennsylvania continues to meet its mission of enhancing the dignity and quality of life of individuals and families by strengthening communities, eliminating barriers to opportunity, and helping people in need reach their full potential through learning and the power of work. Today, Goodwill is one of the largest social and human service organizations in our region, serving eight counties in Southwestern Pennsylvania and nine counties in North Central West Virginia. Each year, we provide needed programs and services to thousands of individuals, helping them find meaningful employment. Now, ready to move into our next one hundred years, we have positioned ourselves to continue to serve the region far into the future, as we strive to meet important community needs and to stay ahead of the curve of new trends and changes to ensure the best community outcomes possible. As President and CEO, it has been my pleasure to serve and my honor to serve the past thirty years at Goodwill. Again, thank you for this honor.
Well, I know our office has been involved with Goodwill over the years, and one of the things I like about Goodwill, there's a project at Pittsburgh Public Schools called Take a Father to School Day, and some of those campaigns Goodwill came through and gave us opportunity to raise money through getting used, lightly-gentle clothes that came down and got money from the poundies, which helped us to keep the program going. But if Ed was here, he would say, "Good job, great job, keep it going!"
Thank you, everyone. Can all members come up?
Sure, may we have all members for the photograph, please?
And Councilwoman Gross, I apologize, this is in your district, and you were supposed to, I apologize, I should have called you up for the proclamation.
Fantastic, we're so grateful to have Goodwill in District Seven, thank you for all the work that you do.
Come, come on. But anyway, I just want to say the reason I did the proclamation is because Kim serves on their Housing Board, and we're so thrilled with the work that she does there, so she can't wait to leave every, every month for the meeting. in his office for Goodwill as well. Thank you.
Ready?
Okay, there are no proclamations to be read into the record, so that will conclude
Have all members, please?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We're welcome.
proclamations for this council meeting. Anyone wishing to speak before City Council this morning, of course, we'll have three minutes in which to do so. I would like to take this time to remind those here that the rules of council are clear when they state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are at this time, or could at another time come before this council. We will not permit profanity, and we will maintain order at all times. We ask that you please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the red light comes, or the yellow light comes on, you have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, your time will have expired. May I ask you to, to take your conversation into the hallway? Thank you very much. Thank you. May we have our first speaker, please? Good morning, welcome.
How are you doing today? How's everybody?
We need your name and the neighborhood in which you reside, please.
My name is Brandon Burshett. I live in Mount Oliver at two oh nine Giffen Avenue.
Thank you, please.
Okay, so once again, my name is Brandon Burshett. I'm a Penn State graduate, excuse me. Can everybody, can everybody hear me? Perfectly? Yep. Good. All right, my name is Brandon Burshett, I'm a Penn State graduate with a degree in journalism. My girlfriend, her name is Blair Victoria Allen, she has a degree from Lock Haven University, she couldn't be here today. I'm here because this past Thursday, I was detained by eight to ten police officers outside of the Zone Three Police Station on Warrington and Arlington Avenue. I would like to read my statement, if that's at all possible. So, "At roughly seven thirty PM, myself and Blair Victoria Allen left our home address of two oh nine Giffen Avenue for the Thelma Yvette YMCA located in the Hill District on Center Avenue. While driving in my two thousand seven Ford Explorer down Arlington Avenue heading towards Warrington Avenue, at the point in which we passed Climax Street, the first patrol vehicle driving in the opposite direction towards Mount Oliver did a U-turn in the middle of the street to begin driving in the same direction as we were. Before we reached the intersection at Warrington Avenue, two other vehicles ended up behind my vehicle, with the patrol vehicle trailing behind the second. As we began to, as we began to drive past Manton Way, located next to the Zone Three Police Station, a second patrol vehicle parked in the street shined a search light through the driver's side window. At this time, there were other officers outside of the police station, one of which I vividly remember loading up the back of a squad car. Before we could drive through the green, the green light at the intersection, a third patrol vehicle spat in front of us, stopped in the middle of the intersection with its police sirens blaring, and at this point, myself and Blair Victoria Allen were boxed in at the corner of Warrington Avenue and Arlington Avenue by several squad cars. Multiple officers between seven to ten, seven to ten, excuse me, approached my vehicle from all directions, a few of which already had weapons drawn. One officer shouted through my window to place my hand on the steering wheel, and at this moment, as I placed my hands on the wheel, I turned to my girlfriend, Ms. Allen, and informed her to place her hands on the dashboard. The same officer instructed me to roll down my windows, and after doing his toll, he demanded that I exit the vehicle. I asked if I could unbuckle my seatbelt, and after informing them that I could, and after informing me that I could, I unbuckled my belt. Three to four officers standing on the driver's side of the vehicle then proceeded to open the driver's side door. One of the officers grabbed my arm and pulled me out of the vehicle, leading me to a squad car that was parked directly in behind my vehicle. As the officers walked me to the vehicle, I was cuffed and placed against the patrol vehicle with my body facing Deckers Auto Shop, which is across the street from the Zone Three Police Station." So at this point, my girlfriend, who's still in the passenger side, is being detained, she's being pulled out of the vehicle, and the officer has his gun drawn, pointed at a nine-degree angle towards the ground, and I told the officer not to aim his gun at my girlfriend, to which he responded, "Shut up, don't be a tough guy." And I responded that Ms. Allen was a woman, and he responded, "So what?" One of the three officers that surrounded me while I was against the vehicle instructed me to calm down. Do I have permission?
I'm sorry, you, you don't, but what I need you to do, please, is to leave the remainder of your statement with the clerk, so that I can reach out to you.
Yes.
Will you do that, please? We'll, we'll take the conversation offline. I'm sorry, thank you very much. Do you only have a digital version?
Yes.
I'm going to ask you to email it in, and I'll give you the way to do that, okay? Thank you. Ma'am? You're, you're welcome.
Good morning, my name is Brooke Burshett-Williams, I am the sister of Brandon Burshett. I'm going to continue to read his statement. The officer stated that they were looking for two suspects, a black man and a black woman in a Ford Explorer, and that myself and Allen fit the description of the suspects. Allen was taken over to a separate, separate squad car, where she was questioned by an officer. At this time, I was being questioned by an officer about my name, date of birth, my height, my weight, and address. Before long, another officer approached the officer who is restraining me against the vehicle, asking me questions, and tells him everything is negative. My handcuffs were taken off, and I am allowed to walk over to the patrol vehicle where Allen and the other officer are conversating. All of the police officers then converge in a circle around me and Allen. They return our IDs and allow us to go, we are released. It's heartbreaking to be a sister and to get a call that your brother, who has never had an interaction with the police, has never done anything wrong, is being profiled because he's African-American and in a certain community at a certain time. We've read too many articles about police officers profiling African-Americans, misusing their authority, arresting people on false pretenses, and it seems like nothing is done. There have been too many reports about disparities, inequality between African-American communities and our other communities, white communities. Every year, another report comes out, and nothing is being done. We have a Gender and Equity Commission, sixteen seats on that commission, one black man and four black women. How is that representing the black population in the city of Pittsburgh? I feel like all of the councilmen and women here, you consistently ask us for our vote, what are you doing to protect us? It doesn't need to be a conversation, it needs to be action. And if you can't make action happen, then the faces that are sitting in these seats need to change.
Hey, thank you. Can we have our next speaker, please?
Wu Shi Yingxing, Rolin Mi Ra, Oakland, Pittsburgh City, Chinatown, San Francisco City, Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President, two thousand and twenty. CGSIi.rlm globalintelligence@gmail.com. My teltext twenty-four-seven is four one two nine six nine seven nine nine seven is my primary number. Citizens, watch CCTV. The Hong Kong-China protesters, I think, are right, and I think that the China government on Yuger's is wrong. I, I'm, I'm looking for workers, I'm looking for warriors, not wimps. Salt Matters to me, that film with Angelina Jolie, for a whole lot of reasons. It's a love story, among other points that are made by the film, have to do with Russia and the United States, and For the Love of Mike. I'm not interested in wimps. Wimps run away, they tell you that they're going to do something, and then don't do it, and they don't apologize. A concern of this council is, and the councils of many of our state capitals, including Austin and Sacramento's carbon, the low-carbon energy technologies world leader is Zhong Rong, that's China, that's China's name for China. Are any of you district representatives willing to introduce local Pittsburgh city legislation to authorize seeking links with Chinese LECT firms to set up production companies in Pittsburgh? I think you should. A concern of this council and state, city councils across the United States is jobs. Now, I have a few jobs, that is, to offer. Pre-publication reviewers of books authored by me, starting at twenty dollars an hour and up, or twenty dollars per text chunk. These books include introduction to international interdisciplinary global studies and global intelligence. The reviewer categories include the whole range from twenties to sixties, races and ethnicities. But we do require the reviewer to provide us with a telephone text number and with an email for communication and for inter-text exchange. Now, Ms. Strasburger is the best of all of you in communicating via email and other things, Mr. Cogle is the worst, and I don't find any of this persuasive.
Thanks, Dr. Miller. Okay, good morning, Ms. Brown.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown, I live in the Hill District. Now, on KDKA radio, Marty Griffin, you know how he talks, when Marty Griffin was talking about the school board, talking about the superintendent, Marty Griffin said, "They don't care, they don't care, and I want anybody living in Hill District call, because you don't care."
A concern of this council and state, city councils across the United States is jobs. Now, I have a few jobs, that is, to offer. Pre-publication reviewers of books authored by me, starting at $20 an hour and up, or $20 per text chunk. These books include introduction to international interdisciplinary global studies and global intelligence. The reviewer categories include the whole range from twenties to sixties, races and ethnicities. But we do require the reviewer to provide us with a telephone text number and with an email for communication and for intertext exchange. Now, Ms. Strasburger is the best of all of you in communicating via email and other things. Mr. Coghill is the worst, and I don't find any of this persuasive.
Thanks, Dr. Miller. Okay, good morning, Ms. Brown.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. Now, on KDKA Radio, Marty Griffin, you know how he talks. Well, Marty Griffin was talking about the school board, talking about the superintendent. Marty Griffin said, "They don't care, they don't care, and I want anybody living in Hill District call because you don't care." So you know, I called. I said, "I live in the Hill District, and my grandchildren still go to Pittsburgh Public School System. I first want you and everybody in this city to know, when the superintendent was here, I went to him and I said, 'You never should have been hired. You are a liar. You embellished. You embellished, so you made them think you were better what you were.'" I was downstairs in Florida for a whole month. Let me tell you, southern people think a lot different. I'm telling you, I seen it. Okay, Marty Griffin says that everybody's saying Andy Sheehan is a racist because he's reporting. No, I seen Andy downstairs. I said, "Andy, I'm telling you, you're not a racist because you're reporting the truth, but you are a racist, and I know it." Now, Marty Griffin, I called back, and I got calling, I said, "Yeah, you saying he ain't because he's your friend." Then after I got off, he said, "Yeah, you say it, prove it." I said, "Tell Marty, let me back on. I'll call in the morning." I'm going to tell you why I say he's a racist. When I went to him and tried to tell him about Lelac, that security guard that had papers about him taking that little boy up in the room, he told me, "Get away from him." But when you come to a black man, you, Ms. Harris, you should be shamed, and they should look into and see. When I go to Spencer, he said he was writing to you, you were working for him, Bodak. He said he's writing a letter about that little boy. He said it's very serious, and I believe it. The people believe you hid it. You knew he was being taken up in the room, so don't pretend like all of a sudden that black man ain't even near the, ain't even near the kids. This boy was, this man was signing off every day, going to the school, get that little boy, up in the room.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. Are there any further speakers this morning? Do we have anyone else wishing to speak before City Council? Then seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of the council meeting and go into presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Burgess, our Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 2330, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in the Amount of $33,000 to Jane D. Simone for Arbitration Services rendered in connection with Act 111 Interest Arbitration. Bill Number 2331, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in the Amount of $16,000 in favor of Robert Aldret and his attorney in full and final settlement of a litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 2332, Resolution Authorizing Issuing of a Warrant in the Amount of $3,875 in favor of James and Randy Cohen for repairs to their gas service line, which was damaged by a city DPW forestry crew performing stump removal and grinding operations of a city ROW tree at this location on September 19, 2019. Bill Number 2333, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City. Certain property having been placed for sale to adjourning property owners in conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program, Items A through C, 846 Finneas, 1815 through 17 Lowry, and 113 Elmont.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Burgess, do you wish to offer up a motion to waive the rolls on 2330 and 2332?
You said that better than I could. So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second on that, please?
Second.
Do we have discussion? Okay, seeing none, then all in favor, aye. Post abstentions. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Both 2330 and 32 appear on this afternoon's standing committee agenda. Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2334, Resolution Requesting Authorization for the Mayor and Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to Enter into an Agreement with Ath Power Consulting Corporation to Provide Customer Service and Soft-Skill Training to the Department's Staff. The agreement is chargeable and payable from the following account in an amount not to exceed $35,750 for a one-year contract. Bill Number 2335, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with Fireman Creative LLC to Assist the City to Plan and Conduct a Design Workshop and Produce a Visually Compelling Suite of Digital and Print Material to Effectively Communicate Our Neighborhood Plan Program and Guide to the Public and a Variety of Users and Provide for the Payment at a Cost Not to Exceed $24,950.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Harris presents Bill Number 2345, Witness Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title VI, Article III, Chapter 639, to Supplement the Code to Regulate Set Standards and Oversee the Possession and Transfer of Crocodilian and Venomous Snakes, and Authorize Enforcement and the Imposition of Penalties and Fines for Violations.
Councilwoman?
Yes, I'd like to have Rule 8 so that this could be on the schedule this afternoon.
Okay, so the Councilwoman makes a motion to waive the rolls so that this sponsored bill may be on this afternoon's standing committee agenda. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, do we have further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, aye. Opposed, abstentions. Thank you, Councilwoman. 2345 appears on this afternoon's standing committee agenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2336, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the city to enter into a grant agreement with the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration to receive the amount of $182,803.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Kell Smith, our Chair of Public Work Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number 2291, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title IV, Public Places and Properties, Article I, Chapters 4, 11, 12, 15, 16, and 19, to Clarify the Jurisdiction of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and to Update Language Relative to the Department's Maintenance of the Use of the Right-of-Way, Especially Involved in Permits and Fees. Bill Number 2337, Resolution Granting unto Seabrook Partner LP, their successor, and assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense in ADA Entrance Ramp at 419 South Craig Street in the Fifth Ward, Sixth Council District. Bill Number 2338, Resolution Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 42, Providing for a Contract with the Design and Construction of the South Nagley Avenue Bridge, Including Construction Management Services, to Account for Increased Project Costs Higher Than Originally Anticipated, but Not to Exceed $1,212,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair has one new paper. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
President Kraus presents Bill Number 2339, Resolution Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 539, which Authorizes the Mayor, the City Clerk, and/or Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Contract with Granicus Inc. for Software Upgrades in Order to Extend the Contract in Additional Six Months.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I have a series of communications from the Office of Management and Budget, and I'll need a motion to receive and file, please.
Bill Number 2340, Communication from Kevin Prowlis, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting a $500 Donation of a Hamstring Curl Machine for the City of Pittsburgh Police Training Academy. Bill Number 2341, Communication from Kevin Prowlis, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting a $500 Donation of a Lead Curl Machine for the City of Pittsburgh Police Training Academy. Bill Number 2342, Communication from Kevin Prowlis, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting a $500 Donation of a Neck Machine for the City of Pittsburgh Police Training Academy.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion to receive and file, please?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye. Opposed, abstentions. Thank you very much. That takes us into Reports of Committee for Final Action, being there is no unfinished business before the council. We begin with Councilman Burgess and our Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 2324, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for November 20, 2019, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 2266, Resolution Authorizing the City to Participate in Applicable Corporative Purchasing Agreements for Goods, Materials, Equipment, Supplies, Services, or Construction as Authorized by the Commonwealth Procurement Code and the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Corporation Law for the 2020 Fiscal Year. Bill Number 2267, Resolution Authorizing City Council to Approve Intra-Departmental Transfers Throughout the 2020 Fiscal Year. Bill Number 2268, Resolution Providing for the Leading of Contracts and for the Use of Existing Contracts for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, and Equipment for City Departments and Maintenance, Repair, Rental, and/or Leasing, Rehabilitation, Renovation, Inspection, or Servicing of City Buildings and Facilities, and for Any Miscellaneous Services in and for any City Departments, and Providing for the Payment of the Cost thereof for the 2020 Fiscal Year. Bill Number 2274, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contract Extension with B2G Now, and Providing for the Payment thereof at a Cost Not to Exceed $59,636. Bill Number 2275, Resolution Appointing Individuals from the Department of Finance to Represent the City as Delegates to the Tax Collection Committee to Be Established for the Allegheny Central Tax Collection District pursuant to the Requirements of Act 32 of 2008. Bill Number 2280, Resolution Authorizing All City Departments in Conjunction with the Department of Finance to Enter into Facilities Usage Agreement for the Purpose of Permitting Groups and Individuals to Rent City-owned Facilities for Recreational and Community-focused Activities During the 2020 Calendar Year. The City shall not Charge More than $10,000 Per Rental Agreement. Bill Number 2305, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Finance to Enter into a Grant Agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Office of Commonwealth Libraries to Receive Keystone Recreation Park and Conservation Fund Grant Monies in the Amount of $750,000 that will be used by the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh to renovate the library for the blind and physically handicapped. Bill Number 2306, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Finance to Enter into a Corporation Agreement with the Carnegie Library regarding the Library's use of the $750,000 in Keystone Recreation Park and Conservation Grant Monies for the Carnegie Library to renovate the library for the blind and physically handicapped.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Finance and Law Committee. Do we have further discussion on any of the bills as presented? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
I have no bills except for 2280. I'm an abstain.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
On Bill 2280, ayes eight, one abstention. All other bills, ayes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, then, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Public Safety Services. Our Chair is Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle. President. Thanks, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2325, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for November 20, 2019, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 2285, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the city into an Agreement with International Trauma Life Support Pennsylvania Chapter for Trauma Life Support Training Services for the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services at a Sum Not to Exceed $6,750, and Providing for the Payment of Cost thereof.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill. Under our Committee on Public Safety Services, is there further discussion on the bill? And seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
I have no bills except for 2292 abstain.
We're on Public Safety, there's only one bill.
Oh, I'm sorry. Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Ayes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill, then, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Public Work Services. Our Chair is Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number 2326, Report of the Committee on Public Works for November 19, 2019, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 2292, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into an Agreement with CDR Maguire, Inc. for Project Design Management Services and Reviews in Connection with Various City Construction Projects, Utilizing Previously Appropriated Funds in the Amount of $570,778.99, and Newly Appropriated Funds in the Amount of $622,530.66, for a Total Not to Exceed Bill Number 2293, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 708, Finally Locating Right-of-Ways and Accepting the Dedication of Roadways, which are part of the Convention Center Roadway Improvement Phases One through Three, and Vacating a Portion of 10th Street Adjacent to the David L. Lawrence Convention Center, No Longer Used for Roadway Purposes by Adding Additional Coordinates Under Description Three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Public Work Services Committee. Is there further discussion? There is, with Councilwoman Kell Smith.
No, I just want to say not under these bills, but under the Finance Bill. I want to change the vote.
Well, we'll deal with that under motions and resolutions.
Okay, so I'll make sure I tell you that.
Sure, thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, further discussion on our bills under Public Work Services. Okay, seeing none, then, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mrs. Harris.
I have no bills except for 2292 abstain.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
On Bill 2292, ayes eight, one abstention. All the other bill, ayes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, then, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Urban Recreation, and our Chair is Councilman Anthony Coghill.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2327, Report of the Committee on Urban Recreation for November 20, 2019, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 2282, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 611 with Clean Net Systems of Pennsylvania, Inc. for the Purpose of Providing Custodial and Cleaning Services at City Parks, Recreation, and Healthy Active Living Senior Centers by Increase in the Cost from $976,222 to $1,36,222.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Committee on Public, or I'm sorry, on Urban Recreation. Is there further discussion on the bill? Then seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Ayes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill, then, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Our Chair is Councilwoman Erica Strasburger. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 2328, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Assets Management for November 20, 2019, with an Affirmative Recommendation. for November 20th, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2294, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in favor of Zones LLC, sole-source reseller for the annual renewal of OTRS Gold Support in the amount of $10,675.69 to provide commercial support, consulting, and development services for the open-source service used by IT Service Management, customer service, and help desk as provided to the Department of Innovation and Performance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill. Under our Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee, do we have further discussion on the bill? Then seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Ayes nine, noes zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill, then having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Our final committee of the morning is our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Our Chair is Councilman Corey O'Connor. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 2329, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for November 20th, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2287, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a Corporation Agreement with Tree Pittsburgh for the purpose of supporting Tree Pittsburgh's efforts to promote and advance the City of Pittsburgh's Urban Forest Master Plan. Bill Number 2288, Resolution Authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's rights, title and interest if any, into the publicly-owned properties in the 18th Ward, Council District Number 3, Residential Rehab Housing, 80919 and 924 Eureka Street. Bill Number 2289, Resolution Authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's right, title and interest if any, into the publicly-owned property in the 12th Ward, Council District Number 9, Institution Expansion, 6513 Meadow Street. Bill Number 2290, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an amended and restated Corporation and Support Agreement between the city and the Allegheny Regional Assets Department.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Is there further discussion on any of the bills? Councilwoman Harris.
Yes, on 2287. This is for Tree Pittsburgh in agreement with the City of Pittsburgh to promote and advance the city's urban forest. I hope, after this last year and the year before, with all the landslides that this city has had, that there are trees to be planted on the hillsides to keep them up where trees have fallen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay. Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider my vote for a bill.
If we can pass these and then under motions-
Oh, I apologize. I thought you did it. I apologize.
No, and then under motions, resolutions, we'll walk you through that, okay?
Thank you.
All right, with no further discussion on the bills under our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs, these bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Ayes nine, noes zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, then, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Then, under motions and resolutions, Madam Clerk, as our parliamentarian, can you walk me through a process for the member to reconsider a vote? Is there? We need to reconsider the bill in its entirety? Councilwoman, what bill number is that, please?
2280.
2280, and under which committee, please?
Under Finance and Law.
Under Finance and Law, Bill 2280.
It's the fees for the-
There is no 2280 under Finance and Law.
Page 6?
Oh, I'm looking at, I'm sorry, forgive me. That's right. Page 6. Bill 2280. So then, may I have a motion to reconsider Bill 2280 under Finance and Law?
Some of-
Second.
In a second, we have discussion on the consideration. Then seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions.
Opposed.
No, 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 you want to reconsider.
I want to reconsider. I apologize.
Okay, so all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'm gonna do it.
Then, Madam Clerk, do we take the roll call for all members again? Or just the Councilwoman Kell Smith? Okay, Council- Okay, Councilwoman Kell Smith, you have the floor.
I apologize for all the confusion. I just wanted to vote no on this bill. I had concerns last week, and I still have concerns just in terms of the, the city shall not charge more than $10,000 for a rental agreement.